Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order if we can please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Happy New Year everyone. This is the first meeting, two thousand twenty, Town and Riverhead Planning Board Meeting. Today is January second. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so we're gonna just get into the discussion items. We're gonna go a little out of order at the request of one of the applicants who has another meeting to attend. So, we're gonna call number three out of order Villas at Roanoke. You're welcome.
I'll just give a quick little synopsis. So, we're here in furtherance of the Villas at Roanoke major subdivision application. We're here to speak about two specific issues, not necessarily issues, but we're here to bring two topics to the board's attention. One aspect is that this map has been revised. As you may recall, their as-of-right yield was six lots, which was had a yield map approved by the planning board. They then came back with a transfer of development rights yield map, which the planning board approved a thirteen lot TDR yield map in order to comply with the requirements of the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. The applicant has elected to provide the affordable housing unit onsite as opposed to another off-site or pay into a fund. So, they had, by utilizing their density bonus as afforded by the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, which the act reads a ten percent density bonus, they've elected to put the one lot here on the, on the subject parcel, so it would give them a total of fourteen lots.
Greg, didn't you say something about the ten percent is, has to be rounded up? So, if you have thirteen, you need two, not one?
So, the, 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 yes, so the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, the way it reads is a ten percent density bonus with lots being rounded up. Now, to comply fully with that, now there's nothing in the town code. The town board has not adopted anything formally within the code about the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. But as I read the, the act itself, it does say a density bonus of ten percent with lots being rounded up. Now, I mean, if that is the case here, I mean, that would actually give them another lot. I don't know if, no, I mean, that's the fact that we're contemplating the Long Island Workforce Housing Act after we've approved a TDR yield map to already increase the density. That may prove to be problematic just in terms of drainage and, I mean, if, if you were to add another lot.
I think it would be probably hard, although I appreciate what you're saying, for us to get decent lots here because the size of lots gets reduced. One of the problems that we had was this area, that's the open space area, we had attributed to each of the lots. And my understanding is you didn't want us to attribute it to the lots. You wanted us to make it a solid line so that it would be a single unit going around. And if that's the case, what we propose to do is do that, if that's what the board wants, and then bring you that map. And the reason we came tonight specifically was to say if we fix the map that way so that we have the solid line, open space, that at the next meeting, we could at least get sketch plan approval so we could start our process to go to the county.
I, I, if I recall correctly, we didn't like the fact that the open space was behind each lot because people just take it over and the town can never police that.
We understand. I have a feeling about it, but I understand your feeling. And so, we're gonna do that. So, we're, I, I will have within a couple of days a new map through Mr. Bergman, just showing this as a solid line and reducing the size of the lots because these lots count in the open space.
And you put in there like the, your fence, you put a fence around that, each lot.
Have you guys talked to anybody in the county yet? Or, I mean, is this thing on the list or?
They, they, they can't really, they don't want their, not send that or appraise or tell me have something.
Okay. And is that still the hope?
Where ninety-nine percent, that's what we're trying for.
Yes, we tried to do that. So, if we could do that at the next meeting, we have that map in front of you. If we can get a resolution, then we could go and start the process.
Yeah, that's fine. Just, Dick?
Just one question, who's gonna own that open space?
Each, each lot owner according to this map, right? Yeah, but this isn't the map we're gonna approve.
What's, what's probably gonna happen is we're gonna have to have some sort of homeowners association to do that.
We did that with.
No, the county, the towns, the open space, oh, as far as community.
Yes.
Say, say again. I hear you.
We probably have to do that. I, well, I think that we have to probably have some sort of homeowners association to do that.
The town would not want to be for liability reasons. And Charles, if you remember, we did that with the Youngs Avenue property.
So, just a quick question. If you look at the sketches, if you look through the sketches in sketch one C.
Yeah, and that was when I was under the impression, I think, I thought after the last meeting.
It might have been something like this plan, except we would take the, we put maybe the drainage on a lot, you know.
Just to refresh your memory, this was, they had, they had presented a couple of different sketch plans. This was the most desirable. I believe it was sketch plan B had a couple of flag lots that served some of the individual parcels. This seemed to be the most agreeable design, similar.
If you make this open space, it'll be similar to that.
But this, this only has thirteen lots, right?
That's right.
This would have four, we need fourteen.
This has the fourteen. That's the only difference.
So, but we would keep a sort of a, a description around drainage area, so that wouldn't be an open space.
The dedicated road drainage would go with the roads.
Right, the road and the lot. Right, the recharge area and the thing would be the town and then this would be, so it wouldn't be like this. It would basically be a lot around, you know, a described piece around the drainage area so that could be dedicated, but the open space would be, be dealt with some other way.
So, that would be okay. Go ahead and do it.
I mean, that's, how, why?
I'd kinda like this. I'd like to be properly, you know, to be responsible for the, you know, if it goes to, you know, homeowners association, no one's gonna maintain it.
This, it, it won't though. These, it won't, the one lot would, right?
No, he's talking about the property lines themselves as far as.
Right, but that's not what, how it's gonna be changed.
Well, our understanding is you want to change as a board to do the opposite of what we showed here.
Yes, that's what we, that's how we left, last left off.
So, then who's gonna maintain the property?
It's not gonna look like this though. It's gonna be a dedicated homeowners association, however they lay it out, next to the recharge area dedicated to the town, but not the, not the open spaces.
So, that's, you know, our thought was that people.
That's how they're typically done.
I've always thought that it'd be appropriate for the people to maintain it because I thought they'd maintain it better than homeowners association.
Well, we had problems in West Lane. We were back and forth with litigation on that.
We were in litigation about that very year.
I drove by Old Orchard a couple of times since they built there and people are on that property even though the fence is up. So, nobody polices that.
Which I, which I think is gonna happen.
What?
They're using the back porch.
Even though the fence is there, you can see where they're dumping stuff.
Yeah, so we would just take basically this map, right, Charles? This area back here would be open space. This lot area that.
We're not though. We're going back to the other way.
This lot area.
It's not gonna look like this.
This lot area that reads forty thousand now would be, you know, twenty thousand, something, and that's a lot. And we would create, because it's a costly, we would suggest setbacks that, you know, obviously making a much shorter rear yard setback because they're already, you know.
Put a set of setbacks on the map.
Yeah, we put them right on the map.
On the map, that way we don't go to zoning board of appeals.
Right, and we can, we can hash that out and it would be part of the.
In the future, I was saying, when you get to Sal Meadows, is, we took seventy-two acres, we made the first lot. A ten acre, one person turned at the horses, and that was the preserved area. And there was no, right, Charles? There was everything around that went right through the property line, all the way around, and there was no, if, you know, who's watching the lot, who's taking care of it.
Somebody owned it.
Is there, you know, little Johnny's over here who's got home insurance on him, you know what I mean? So, you know, you're not at the mercy of every homeowner running through here with their kids and bikes and bringing arms and so, you know, just for the future, you know, that'll work that well.
That may be another way to do it, just to have a single lot set aside.
And somebody owns it, and somebody's liable and somebody's responsible.
So, if, once they give you the revised map, just, you know, email it to us so we can see it before we vote on it.
All right. So, so just to click this general concept, except this will be kept off as a separate lot, like more like into a traditional cluster.
That's, that's what the board is asking us to do.
Right.
Well, it seems that the board's satisfied with the design and they've complied with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, so. I think that addresses both issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next item, four oh six Osborne Avenue. PR back, right?
Your sex good? Your beard good?
Yeah, pretty good.
Right, now it's on set?
No, no, didn't get four, about to start down.
All right, so we are back talking about four oh six Osborne. This is a applicant, site plan application to construct a two-story roughly ninety-two hundred square foot mixed-use building with approximately thirty-nine hundred square feet of retail on the ground floor and six residential apartment units on the second floor. We've been back and forth a couple of times with regards to the design of the building and the elevations, the direction of the planning board. The applicant has prepared some revised elevations to reflect the cultural character of surrounding area. Distributed some of the revised elevations, really just here for the board's input and comments to see if any of these designs are agreeable. And if they are, we can move forward with the final approval.
What, what we're proposing is shutters around all sides. You know, these, these elevations are just the one, the one side, just to give you an idea, all the place is glassy. But they would have design on them. There are a couple of different designs that were looked at and there are sketch, copies of them I gave to the board. The one that, with the asterisk on the first page is the one that the client would like. He likes the red on the white shutters and the flower design. Also, we have some, you know, sconces, some different sconces rather than the colonial fixtures that are there. There's some pictures of them. I think it's the third page back, which is more fitting with the character. And also the welcome placemat in Polish, if you like that. It's a little bit different. Oh, and then Chris Madaluski apologized. He couldn't be here. He's on, on vacation upstate, so otherwise he would have been here too. So, whatever the board would like, again, the, the client would like the, the red flower on the white shutters. It's fitting with the character of the area. The shutters, I think, acts, makes it more homey feeling. It's fitting with the, some of the other buildings down the street and, and I like the color, the, the red in there.
It's gotta be red.
Gotta have red.
Does anybody get to the ARB or would you stand out? The ARB was against shutters.
Right.
Are they supposed to give us something in writing?
No, we already, we already had their comments and, you know, we went back and forth a couple of times, but really, for what they have approved, other than the shutters and the color and, or whatever design is on them, is really, you know, I, I don't think we need to go back to this point.
They're just advisors.
I'm gonna grant it.
They're just advisory.
Me too. I'm fine with, with it. You know, I don't know as much more you could do and, you know, I think it's fine what you have proposed here.
So, go with the red flowers?
That's my opinion. Everybody else?
That's mine also.
Gonna have a big sign up that front though?
We have the sign.
Yeah, the Polish town sign is being situated on the corner.
Plus this. Plus this, and, yeah, we moved the sign so it's not like bang, we got it cornered. So, we meet all the setback ordinances and everything.
So, we're good. The board's okay with the top elevation drawing on the first one to reflect the flowers?
Okay, great.
All the way around? All the way around, yes. And we get elevations in all the way around showing you that.
Yeah, I mean, just save that for the final, you know, when you get to my laws and everything.
Thank you.
Very good. Again, thank you very much. Happy New Year to you.
Okay, next item, fifteen thirty North Country Road in Wading River.
How you doing?
Hello?
Happy New Year.
Send a name from the record, please.
Fernando Rodriguez.
Design, designer or?
Yes, designer. I represent the owner and I apologize for the owner. He just wasn't able to come today.
That's fine.
He's out of the state and.
It's, it's that time of year.
He tried. He's been with me all the meetings and he really tried. Might give out when I cancel the meeting, so.
All right, so the planning department has received a site plan application to construct a plus or minus two hundred square foot office addition over an existing deck area at an existing office building. The application also proposes lighting improvements, a sign, restriping existing parking stalls, and installing a proposed planter. Pursuant to town code, the Environmental Quality Review Act, this is a type-one action pursuant to secret as it falls in the Wading River Historic District, requiring mandatory coordinator review among involved agencies. Subject parcel identified as tax map number six hundred dash fifty-four dash two dash one is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of North Wading River Road and North Country Road in the hamlet of Wading River. Subject parcel is zero point two acres in size and is presently approved with a single-story irregularly shaped office building. Now, the site in its current form was approved by town board of the Town of Riverhead by town board resolution number two twenty-five dated April fifteenth nineteen eighty-six, which granted a special permit application by the owner at the time to construct a non-conforming office extension in a residential area. The town board made a number of findings, basically that the applicant seeks to expand the non-conforming use for his law practice at the time. Premise wouldn't conflict with the, it wouldn't conflict with the harm of the surrounding area. The proposed improvements would be in residential character. There was adequate parking and a couple of other findings. Now, on page three of the staff report, I did take a picture of the original site plan application that was submitted in nineteen eighty-six so you can see the configuration and the layout. It is noted that the original site plan denoted ten parking stalls onsite. These stalls were shown at nine foot by twenty foot. And I also noted that on the site plan, there were no parking calculations provided in that application. So, while the proposed addition does not require any special permits or any approvals from the town board, the application will require several variances, which I will denote. Now, the location of the proposed addition would be constructed over a wooden deck and patio area, which would serve to connect the two portions of the building. I've taken a picture of that on page four of my report. Now, the site plan does indicate that the proposed addition will be used as office space. Pursuant to town code, there are certain areas that can be excluded from floor area calculations, including, I won't go through all of them, but atriums, attic space, floor space for building maintenance areas, elevator and elevator lobbies. Seeing that this is proposed as an office use, it is not something that can be excluded in the floor area calculations and therefore must be used for the parking calculations. The most significant issue with the site plan currently under review is the amount of parking provided on the site, the layout of the parking stalls, and the traffic circulation. The parking calculations provided on the current site plan indicate nineteen hundred and four square feet of occupiable office space, which would actually require, if you break it down at one per two hundred square feet, it actually requires nine point five four parking spaces, which would be rounded up to ten. In its current configuration, the site plan only proposes seven marked stalls. This is a condition that is gonna require relief from the zoning board of appeals.
Have a clue to see a handicap?
Yes, sir. In addition to the lack of required parking, the onsite traffic pattern does not provide the required drive aisles or circulation pattern to safely service the site. The main bank of parking stalls, which is located on the eastern side of the property, they're parked at roughly a sixty-degree angle, which is generally reserved for one-way parking. You know, someone pulls in angle, they pull out. However, in this situation, you're actually, it's, they're proposing two-way traffic, so you'd be pulling in, backing out, and going back after the same entrance. The optimal traffic pattern, if we were looking at this site from fresh set of eyes, would be to have the, have office workers or customers of the business come in off North Wading River Road, park into sixty-degree parking angle, and then exit out through North Country Road. However, in its current configuration, doing something like that would require the elimination of one more parking stall, which would leave the site, you know, it's all, if they requires ten, they're proposing seven. If we eliminated that, they'd get six parking stalls, which would represent a forty percent reduction in the required parking.
If picture number five, which shows the front.
Yes.
Where is the, where is the property line that's in that there?
So, the, the.
Plenty ruined the park.
So, here's the thing. The brick patio is zero point two feet off of that property. So, this is a pre-existing.
Basically, everything that's shown.
Pretty much as soon as you step off of that patio, you're in the town right away, which that's another aspect that I sort of brought up is the fact that even in its current state, forget the traffic circulation, if we, if the board approved the site plan as is. Now, the, the current tenant may not have a very intense office use. He may not require all the parking. I'm not sure of the nature of the business. But approving another office addition for a site that's underparked could almost, I don't wanna say incentivize, but, you know, people would likely park in front of that building thinking that it's part of the site, which would be reasonable to assume. However, it is within the town right away.
Right there, Greg, you seen?
Yeah, pretty much. When you, when you step off that patio.
Is there a parking district for the downtown area next to, next to the restaurant?
In Wading River.
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, there is a town.
It's a town-owned.
There is a town-owned parking lot west.
Not a district, not a district.
And I mean, you know, it's still, I mean, even that, that parking area is, you know, probably fifteen hundred feet away, so it's, it's not like it would be suitable to really serve the site.
We, I think we would have to add some striping here and there right away, you know, so people, nobody parks in there.
Yeah, so we could do that. I mean, that would require town board, you know, I would, we would recommend that the planning board send a recommendation to the town board to identify that area as no parking.
If you don't mind me jumping in, and then one of the, one of the solutions we presented to Greg and the advisory board was to have the, the traffic going this way. So, there's a cutout in the, in the curb right now. So, use that as the driveway. But I actually stood there and I brought in the, the, the film for everyone to see. I stood there in middle of the summer, I think it was in August, one afternoon from two o'clock to four o'clock, and I taped it. It's a very dangerous road. People, this is a road with a slope going down. These two roads intersect right here. People are zooming down this road. So, my client, his, and he sat there with me making the video. His worries was that, you know, someone would come out of his office and, you know, accidents would happen.
Buying the insurance, bang.
And we actually, I, I can't, and I apologize, I cannot remember the name of the gentleman that was in the advisory board with us.
May have been Brad.
I think, yes. And he actually said that he agreed with me and that he didn't like the idea of having the, you know, after seeing the videos of people, I mean, going sixty miles an hour, there's actually, because this is right across the street from the fire department, there's a, a little speed, or there was a little speed, a digital speed. And we could see how fast they were going. And people are just zooming down this road, actually while I was taping. And I taped it. There was almost an accident happening here at the.
According to the report, the building was hit once already.
Actually, according to the police report, I think it was hit three times, two or three times already. And that's actually one of our next discussions or points, to put up a retaining wall to prevent, because the building is at a lower elevation than the road. And there are some windows here and there's some offices here. And I actually spoke to his employees and they tell me, we're scared to sit here. You know, so we see the cars and the wheels are eyesight. And then we see the car zooming by.
The accidents happen all in the same part of the building?
Yes, it's actually here in the corner. That's where the, you know, I think two or, two or three accidents have happened.
There are often accidents just in the road. Just last week there was one. I lived there.
Oh, so you know, you know the road really well.
So, variances, as I spoke, plan will require a relief from the zoning board of appeals for at least three parking stalls, possibly four, depending on what the board's direction is with the traffic circulation, as well as a setback variance because due to the non-conforming nature of the lot, they're building within required setback. Now, one of the issues I, I spoke with Fernando about was the fact that this space is being shown as office. It would be conditioned space. It could be occupied. You know, it may not be the current tenant's intent. As I understand, it, his desire is to really just connect the two buildings so that people don't have to leave. It is kind of an irregularly shaped building. So, you know, one possible thing that I discussed throughout there was if it was just possible to enclose it and maybe as a breezeway so that it's not considered office space. I think we could look at it a little differently then, to where you're not trying to put more office space onto an already smaller, non-conforming lot with a bunch of non-conforming conditions.
Is he intend solely to, to get people out of the weather?
Yes, actually, the intent is to, as we see in the plan, bigger in the, in the floor plan, to have the mechanical room, which right now is located down in the crawl space. It's not a basement. It's a crawl space. Break it up and put it in this little area here, which already exists, but, I'm sorry, which does not exist. It's part of the addition. And to close this up, and this would be pretty much a walkway. I was telling Greg before, when this conversation started, my client actually said, you know, let's forget about it. You know, it will be too much trouble for the little, you know, for two hundred square feet. And a few weeks later, one of his employees quit because of the reason that she didn't wanna walk outside. In the middle of the winter especially, you know, she didn't wanna walk from one office to another and cross those twenty feet, fifteen, twenty feet of, you know, unprotected area. So, he said, let's go back to the original plan and go for the variances because I don't wanna lose anymore, anymore employees and. want to lose any more, any more employees," and, so that area right there is mostly, it will be just a passageway.
Is it still a legal office?
It's, it's insurance, yes.
Insurance?
Insurance, yes.
You know, I, I would, I would do what you said, this way it would eliminate the parking problems, not an office space, really isn't an office space. You tie the buildings together, that would, that would make a lot more sense.
Are you open to that, I mean, if it-
I would have to check with my client, but I'm almost positive that he would be open to it, I mean, again, it's, we're looking for a breezeway. The only issue or problem that I might foresee right now is to, if we create a passageway, we're going to create here a sort of a-
A cavity with a-
Exactly, you know, an atrium, a cavity which-
Dead zone.
Dead space with no access to it.
Just to deal with those roof lines alone, getting them all together, but, you know.
That, 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 that would be, that would be the least of the issue, the issue here would be to have that open space in the middle of, you know, in the middle of the two buildings, but I can definitely, of course, you know-
Just an option.
Exactly.
I, I, I'm just throwing it out because it is a small piece of property, you know, we do have to look at it as, you know, while this current tenant may not have a very intense use, I mean, at some point down the road, if he sells the business, a more intense use comes in, and now we've got this site where there is this additional office space that is underparked.
Disco.
Trying to come up with some other options, you know, I mean, in addition to the cost that will be incurred for zoning board of appeals, relief from parking, it's approximately two thousand dollars per space, so I mean, you know, before you get the health department and building permits, you're looking at, you know, the applicant would be looking at approximately six thousand dollars for parking, so, just trying to throw out some additional ideas that maybe could achieve-
That, that we have talked about, and that he's, he knows, and he's willing to, of course, to, to pay for the fee, so he can continue with his business and you not lose, honestly, not lose any more good employees. He wouldn't mind, you know, of course, it hurts, but he wouldn't mind paying it.
In order to keep this moving, why, you take that back to your, your client, but I think we should move forward with how we may want this to work out.
Yeah, so that, that's the main que- you know, if, if the board is okay with the traffic circulation, I mean, it is a existing condition. Now, it does, it does differ slightly from the originally approved site plan. The original site plan did show them as ninety-degree parking stalls, these are angled, but again, I mean, if the board's agreeable to it-
I would, I would like to see the safest possible-
So there wouldn't be a curb cut over here by crossing the firehouse, right?
No.
Okay.
Right now, you'd have the handicap parking stall would be right here, there'd be no access through there.
So, if these are angled in, pull in here, and angle in, how do they get out?
And, when I went to do a site visit, that was one of the first things I noticed, you know, I mean, I pull in, and you have to be really, you know, I mean, you're, you're getting really close to this building in order to back out, you know, I mean, if someone had a, I drive a small Honda Civic, if somebody had a large pickup truck, it would be difficult, it would be very difficult to navigate.
It would have, they, they would have to back out. The only issue that I see with doing it the way that the, this plan represents it, is that we wouldn't be following the town guidelines and the required dimensions for these, I don't know how, honestly, I, I designed the parking lots, the various, I think I did three or four different options for the, for the parking lot, and I do not know how they ca- they, they were able to come up with this following today's, today's dimensions, required dimensions.
I can't recall the same.
That was a long time ago.
I mean, this, this was the only way that, angling it was the only way that, that we were able to follow.
So, yeah, that, at this point, in order to keep it moving, would really require, you know, direction from the planning board, if they're okay with this, they do need to go to the zoning board, so we can-
I think George brought up a good point about striping on this area, so nobody parks there, and signage, and also, you know, that planter or berm to protect that part of the building that keeps getting hit, I, I'd like to see that on the plan and have somebody look at that, maybe Vinnie could look at that for us to see what could possibly withstand what they propose.
Right, yeah, I mean, right now, it's just, there are no details of it, the height of construction, so the applicant would need to design, come up with some sort of design.
Some type of landscaping feature that could-
The, the reason why, and I, I just explained to Greg, the reason why we never came up with a, a more definite, you know, solution was because we wanted to see if it was possible, first of all, and we're not looking, he wasn't, you know, the, my client isn't looking to have like this monstrous thing.
Right.
Something between eighteen to twenty inches high, you know, maybe in stucco or railroad ties, something that will prevent the cars to hit the building if there is another accident, and also something to beautify that corner there, to make it look a little bit better right now, look, so we've been talking with the, with the highway department too, because there's a drain there that's been causing a lot of trouble, actually floods. Last September, when we had those strong rains, we had some flood in the building, so, you know, to, to beautify that corner, to beautify that corner, that's one of the reasons also for the planter.
And I mean, that is the tributary area for that, because I mean, everything pitches right down, so there's a whole bunch of drains.
The elevation of the firehouses.
Yeah.
Much higher.
All right, so they, they will address, obviously, we'll have you address the striping, the signage within the town right-of-way, we'll need details in the planter. In terms of the parking configuration, is the board okay with just having the access on North Country?
Yes, because-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, North Waiting River.
Yeah.
North Waiting River.
I don't know if-
So, so what they're doing now is they, even this person here has to back all the way out into here to turn around and get out, right?
I, I mean, you, it, it's possible, like, when I backed, I probably parked in one of these spots, I mean, you can-
Maybe they could be angled a little less.
Yeah, just to maybe take that out of there a little bit, and perhaps in here, just to set their mind at ease, perhaps put in some, some vertical, you know, steel pipes.
Bal, balance, you mean? Or to protect the, the building.
Yeah, just to, you know, give another area of protection. Sure the employees would be happy with that.
Site plan does propose forty-two inch tall baller lights along the perimeter parking area, and they have submitted a photometric lighting plan which demonstrates compliance.
It's a visit. Needs a visit.
Other than that, you know, we will handle coordination with the highway department and the landmark preservation through the secret referral process, does not need to go to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, and it would need a health department approval for the expansion. So, I think we got some direction for the applicant, we can go from there, we do have a resolution on to start the secret coordination process.
So you have a path forward with us if the, if the owner doesn't want to, you know, do the atrium to connect it, you could, you have our direction.
What, what kind of septic system?
Right now, the septic system, I think, is one of the old, yeah, it's successful, yes, it's been there for, for at least no records, and the Suffolk County Health Department does not have any records of being changed, I think, since after seventy-three, so, been there for a while. That's, we're counting on that, yes.
There's nothing you can do entirely, to create a passageway so that, so that you wouldn't have to go outside, that somehow you can rearrange the walls or something like that.
Well, there is, well, there was, this right now is the customer's waiting area, and to go from one side to the other, you would have to go through the customers, you know, the client's waiting area, so that's according to my client, the way that his business is structured.
Yeah.
You're trying to avoid that to happen, you're trying to separate, you know, the client waiting area and the office area, so that's why this area right here, which right now it has a door, but if this is approved, that door will have to be moved and keep
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Plus a lot of money for two and a half feet.
Take care.
Thank you.
Item four, agenda, Hopkins, residential chapter two nineteen.
Do we have to, Greg? Let me pass the resolution, sending it to the-
No.
Sending it to the GBA?
No, no, they would get, they would get a denial, they'll, will generate a denial letter, but we wanted to get the direction of the board for it.
No, Jefferson can do that, right?
Yeah.
All right, John, what do you got tonight?
All right, so the planning department has received a review, they have a chapter two nineteen application that involves the construction of a one hundred thirty-foot containing wall, bulkhead structure including stormwater containment improvements. The stormwater containment improvements include a gravel trench drain system that's connected by perforated pipe to a leaching basin, and, and the proposed project involves bluff stabilization, planting eight grasses on the bluff for further erosion protection. The application has received a letter of non-jurisdiction from the DEC as all construction will be done one foot landward at the top of bluff. The site is developed on a zero point six-nine acre parcel with the residential dwelling, wooden deck, and frame garage located in the RV eighty zoning use district on the north side of Cliff Road, Cliff Road East in Waiting River, New York. With regards to secret, it's an enlisted action with coordinated view being optional and recommended, and we, the, the application was referred to Vinnie, and they did, he did provide comments, and the applicant has revised the site plan to Vinnie's comments, and we have, we submitted the plan to Vinnie, so he can give us final comments on the revisions made by the applicant. Recommendations or recommendations, we, staff recommends that no approval be given until we receive Vinnie's final comments, and then we can get approval on that application. Does the board have any questions?
So this is the upper bluff line?
Yeah.
The left line, right?
Yeah, it's going to be one foot landward, so it's going to be further in.
What's it going to be constructed on?
Excuse me?
What's it, what it's going to be constructed on?
It's going to be wooden tie rod systems, a dead man's system.
That drainage, how is that drainage system going to work?
It's, it's going to be sloped back, pitched backwards, landward, so it's going to flow downward into the drain system, and then it's going to go into a dry, dry zone.
Just into a drywall?
Drywall, yes.
So they're trying to contain the water from going down the bluff and they're going to contain it on the property?
And into the ground.
How high is the wall going to be out of the ground?
I don't, I don't, I can look into that for you.
Just curious.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be, maybe a couple inches, because it's going to be put down.
Just enough to retain the wall.
Yeah, enough to retain the wall, and the wall's very well vegetated, so if there's any disturbance, they're going to replant what needs to be planted.
And Vinnie's comments were all addressed?
Yes.
Okay.
We're just waiting, I just, just to make sure everything else is-
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have any public hearings tonight, any public comments on the one resolution that we have, any public comment? Okay, resolution.
Motion of resolution number one, we read town planning board, which classifies the site plan application at fifteen thirty, North Country Road, as a type one.
Sorry?
Sorry.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve, resolution twenty twenty dash oh one for five thirty, North Country Road, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution's approved. Okay, any public comment on any matter in front of the planning board? Public comment? Okay, we have Jefferson for S-Power.
We received correspondence this week about the S-Power two project, this is the one that's going through the Article ten process, the letter is from S-Power indicating that there are portions of census tracts that are defined as environmental justice areas.
And just to give you a brief definition of what environmental justice area and what this intent was, or is.
Environmental justice areas are those that are, have a percent, certain percentages defined by the federal government as being low or moderate income people, or minorities, or other groups of that nature, and the whole purpose of that is when you have a large-scale project such as a highway, for example, going through these areas, it may cause displacement, or if you have a factory in, in an area like this, it may place an undue burden on a targeted population, and the whole purpose of identifying the environmental justice areas is to try to minimize or avoid those impacts to those lower high-income areas or minority areas. And believe it or not, and I was surprised by it, there are two of those such areas within, around the S-Power project, and we have a map, and I apologize, it's, we don't-
Do these justice areas were backed down, probably through some other study?
They're, that was done by the US Census from the two thousand and ten, so that was done through the US Census process, not by the applicant, but it was done by the US federal government. The two areas are the two, it's identified as block group one, they're both block group one, the other one is block group six, but they're both have the same census tract, sixteen ninety-seven point zero four. It is an enormous, large area, it goes all the way to the Brookhaven Town Line, up to Sound Avenue, and then east of Edwards Avenue, it is a very, very large area. Within those areas, there's a population of approximately twenty-seven hundred people. When you take a look at the percentages, there are two triggers for the environmental justice, one is forty-five point four percent of the population in the one area identify themselves as being minority group in the census, and the other area that's within a half a mile area of the block group was identified of twenty-six point eight percent having a household income below federal poverty level. Of the two thousand seven hundred and nineteen people living in that, those census tracts I mentioned, approximately twenty-five percent or twenty-five, I'm sorry, five hundred and forty-two people would fall into one of those identifications as being affected by the environmental justice, and that's what triggered them to be identified as an environmental justice area. So the question is, is how does this project specifically adversely affect those minority Kind of a interesting concept, if you look at what, you know, solar farm is, you've certainly seen enough of them, do you believe that this project is going to be having a significant environmental impact or social impact against them?
Does property value fall into that category?
Greg, when I looked at that, and we looked at the economic impact, remember, and I don't know if property value was really a part of that or not.
I, I can't speak to, for the environmental justice aspect.
No, not, not that, but for the, the secret review, remember we looked at that, do you remember?
Yeah, no, I don't have the information.
Yeah, I, I don't have it in front of me either. And the question is, will this have, we can certainly put that question back to them, so if you have a, we have until January sixth to respond back to them, so if you have a specific concern, we can certainly draft a letter back to them, include that as far the record.
Can anybody think of any way that a poor person or minority would be harmed by solar? I can't think of any.
Well, if it lowers their property value, or the home served by public water, are they on private wells?
I can't answer that, I, I would have to go and look for where these homes, specific homes are, I don't know if I could even do that through the census data. I can, you know, find out where the public water is and see where the-
If it's covered by-
Right, right, how many homes are in that area.
Tell you right now, there's an area right here of twenty-five eight, that's on private wells, there's a couple of houses.
What's that have to do with-
We just approved one. We just approved one sub. On the flip side, would they be saving any money in the long run about, from utilities?
It's not service potential.
I mean, that's a-
No.
No way.
They're supposed to give anybody a break on their power, of course, right?
No. I can't imagine down in here, I mean, these are all private homes, you know, I can't imagine in here, but, oh, I, I know why.
Does their data suggest that property values go down next to-
Incomances and trail park on River Road.
Solar farms? I wouldn't think they'd be in a better neighborhood in the world.
We'd have to look at that and, versus other types of industrial uses also.
Well, I know every morning when I drive by- Well, I know every morning when I drive by down Edwards Avenue, you listen to the radio, and it just goes completely static when you're driving by, so I'm sure in your house, you would have similar impacts if you were close enough.
You know, you know where this incumbences, this is all that's...
It's not supposed to listen to AM anymore.
Well, you know, you don't know what people listen to, or if, if they have antennas, or...
This is, this is the River Road area where all those, they have that mobile home park that's been in there for years and years and years. That's a fairly large...
Where is that one?
River, no, the one you come out of, you went straight across from Colmer and made a, had to make the right down in there, this River Road.
So...
This area up here, for many years, was called the Acus area.
Where?
Acus in this area, because of planes coming in.
Right.
And they were, the FAA said there was no development could take place across.
So, that would, would increase property loss, right?
Now, we, it was brought up in one of these other hearings, that the glare from the solar panels can affect pilots.
But again, this is not...
Unfortunately, it's not a, not an active area anymore.
Right, so the question is, is how does this affect low-income people in that area or minorities?
So, we got the letter on December twentieth, right before the holidays, and we have to respond over the holidays by January sixth.
Monday.
Right.
Yeah, that was cute.
I got the letter on Monday.
I don't think they planned it that way.
Well, I think, you know, we should look into the things we brought up to see if there is, in fact, a concern, I mean...
We can also write them a letter back asking for additional time. That's with the board.
When, I mean, the letter was dated the twentieth, when did we, stamped January second?
Yeah, the date of, of the letter does not reflect the receipt that we got. That's correct.
Does it, this doesn't go into soil and testing soil or anything?
No, they're, they're not using any chemicals or minerals that were suggested by a member of the public at the meeting. They're using, it's an inert material.
What do you mean? For what?
It's non-hazardous.
It's not, using a non-hazard material.
For the panels?
Was that?
For the panels?
Yeah.
And the mounts and the brackets and everything?
It's, they're steel or aluminum.
Did we review that?
We did. They came to a work session on, town board work session, and they, they disclosed what building materials was gonna be. And we did look at the prior material that the public suggested, which, but they'd used the exact chemical that was being suggested, it would, could have presented a potential adverse impact, but it, nobody uses that. It's a compound of that, which is not the same thing as what was being suggested by the public. And they're not even using any of that. They're using totally...
Nothing on the inside of those panels.
That, that's what's been represented to us. I mean, we can always request a manufacturer's cut sheet.
I think we should. I think we should.
And that's when we get that far down the road.
This is just too big not to take a closer look.
Yep.
You could probably get a soil testing...
Well, I, I...
Question or whatever, or somewhere, some sort of number, because we have a site that's got a couple of years on it right now.
Well, I don't know if the same type of panels are being proposed here as on those previous ones.
They are not.
But I think we should look into it. And if you get a cut sheet on them, can you share it with us?
Absolutely.
So, I think one day isn't enough time to answer these questions, so could you write to them, call them, email them, and say, we received it on January second? It was dated December twentieth, and we have to look into a few things, and we request thirty days of whatever time we need to look into it?
Yep. I can through that. Okay.
Is there still something that the solar proposed, the government?
I'm sorry, I'm...
For the government property. Is there still something kicking around to solar on that property?
They have not proposed it. It is a permitted use in this, in that zone.
Yeah, but nothing's been proposed.
Has not been suggested or even offered.
Yet. Yet.
Well, they're bringing a lot, subdivision map to the planning board, I would assume fairly soon.
It's being held up at DEC right now.
Okay. How many times has it been there? How many times it's been here?
They've had a, a pretty significant staff turnover, and the promises that were made by the prior staff, whoever's now retired, are no longer there.
They're telling what? They're telling the other guy's name?
So, this letter is coming from S-Power, not the sighting board?
Sighting board has not met on it yet.
So, how can S-Power dictate when they get comments back?
I think that's more of a request than a directive.
Okay, so...
Because there's not a, I think we should, who would write this, is not just write it back to S-Power, but write it back...
Sure, absolutely, asking for more time.
Right.
I wondered that myself, to be honest with you. How can they...
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't think it's a deadline. The, the way it reads is just they'd appreciate our comments. I mean, we can send them a letter.
Welcome any comments.
Yeah. By January sixth, just like all the fake deadlines that they told us they had for everyone.
I'll, I'll make sure I'll get it out tomorrow.
Good. They would appreciate submission by that time.
If there's anything else, else in that, I have one other matter to bring up with the board.
No, it's, that's it.
Okay. We have issued a positive declaration on Greasy Hill Development for the C and D yard. I would like to ask...
Middle Road?
Yeah. I'd like to ask to get permission from the board to retain just semen to help us in reviewing it. It would be at the applicant's expense and not the town taxpayers' expense.
John can handle it?
Not for something of this magnitude. Jeffrey has the knowledge and expertise with groundwater geology. He's reviewed this type of development numerous times before. For type of development like this, I'd really like to have his knowledge and expertise behind it.
I agree, yes.
At, at the applicant's expense?
Yep.
I have no problem as long as we verify there's no conflicts of interest.
Okay. And I did check Stan. We did not do a resolution last time, but we just a town board resolution on Jeffrey, so we'll do the same thing again for this one.
Okay.
Are we supposed to bring up that, Beijing Hollow Club?
Oh, about the road?
Right away?
The, the highway superintendent does not want to take the road.
Do we have to do anything?
No.
So, the only thing I said is unless they are willing to redesign the drainage to acceptable standards for Vinnie and the highway superintendent, I don't know that we want to see him back here.
They would have to redesign the subdivision.
And the golf course.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well...
Because we couldn't take the road from the golf course. So, they would have to come up with their own drainage system to take on their own. And that's on them.
Then maybe it doesn't work.
And the roads, and the roads.
Yeah.
Bay road, bay road. Yes, by the road going into a...
And then I have one more thing for you after.
But I would still say to them that if, unless it could be redesigned to acceptable standards, that we can't move forward with it.
Yeah, and we're, Joe is absolutely adamant not to. Unless they come up with a design that works through all three of us.
Correct.
Right. Okay. That's it?
Okay. No public comments. Minutes will do next meeting. Next meeting is January sixteenth at three PM. Motion to adjourn.
The most.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Have a good night.
Okay, everybody.
Alright, we are.